The meeting of the Warren County Board of Education will come to oral. We'll stand as Mr. Bean at least in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion is carried, the agenda's approved. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion is carried, the consent agenda's approved. I will now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Bobby Cox for the operations report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I think we, Student Advisory, in our recognition since we're in July, we don't have those folks here tonight, but we'll welcome them back when school starts in a couple of weeks. So, we'll go directly into our operations report as Madam Chairman indicated. First is our Parent Involvement Plan. Ms. Vicky Dodd has provided that and worked with that Parent Involvement Plan. We just need approval, but anything that you'd like to mention about the plan?
It was really, really a lot of fun to look at the parents when we were here working on that and going through it, trying to explain this is why we do it. And they're going to be asking their principals also more about the school plan. They're enjoying it.
And Vicky met with our Parent Advisory Board the night that we had the retirement banquet. So, she met with our newly formed Parent Advisory Board. That was our third meeting. We had one in May, June, and July. We have representatives from two schools and we have them listed, or have represented, two representatives from every school on our Parent Advisory Board. We've had a good turnout and we've asked them to get involved with being a liaison between school and the board. And we're going to have them come and report to the board at our mini retreats so that we have some contact with the board. And I think we've sent out links to all the board members, but on our website, we've got a site just for them and it has their name and their email address listed. Have all of our meeting minutes listed on there as well so that we can keep up with that and so the public can see that. But the Parent Advisory, or the Parent Involvement Plan is a part of our federal program's requirement and we put that in your packet and we just need the board's approval to move forward with that.
Do I have a motion to move forward with the Parent Advisory Committee?
Madam Chairperson, I move for adoption of the Parent Involvement Plan as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion is carried to move forward with the parent agenda plan.
Okay, thank you. Next item is our strategic plan and our new mission, vision, and beliefs. As the board knows, we have been working collaboratively with our board, with our central office administration, and we've worked for several months to try to revisit that. So, very glad tonight to have Dr. Redster with us from Belmont. He was leading that work for us and helping us through that process, through our collaboration with the Center for Improvement of School Districts. So, we're very happy that he's here with us tonight. And I wanted to unveil tonight our new brochure that we're working on with our new vision, mission, beliefs. So, let me get our computer to come on. Now, our graphic there of our new vision, mission, beliefs, and I want to give a lot of credit to Dina who has developed our new brochure and pulled all that together for us. A nice new brochure and you can see our revised mission is that the Warren County School District exists to achieve high levels of learning that lead to college and career readiness and social, emotional well-being for all of our children. Now, our mission is Warren County School District, one team that provides a superior education for every student. And we've also put in there the things that we feel like that we need to do to succeed, which is to operate as a professional learning community, ensure that the school and district leadership have high expectations for all students, and provide an excellent teacher in every classroom for every student, engage all families and students support systems, and recognize that the power to drive success, or drive, their power to drive success for their students. Follow the strategic plan developed by the board and the district leadership and ensure reading on grade level by third grade for every child. And that's Autumn reports to the board every month about that and supports our Read 20 message. So, those are the things that as we have come together collaboratively as a group that we feel like we, as a leadership group with the Board of Education, central office leadership, that we need to do to succeed. And then, we believe, the belief statements over there, educate our citizens, our educated citizens are critical to our society. Education is a partnership among students, families, schools, and community. All students are of value and all individuals are respected. Cultural diversity is celebrated and is important to the success of every student. Children are our first priority. Every decision and action must be based on the needs of our students. Highly qualified, effective instructors and leaders are vital to the success of our students. Every student and teacher, every student, teacher, and administrator has the right to a safe and secure learning environment and technology is an integral part of our learning process. So, those are the statements that we have come together and placed as belief statements. And I particularly liked the graphic that we put up top. So, that we have our kindergarten students coming in at the very beginning, but we also have the graduation caps on top and our goal is to see them graduate. So, we wanted to make that pictorial as well. So, just very excited about how this process came together. Appreciate your work. You know, we spent some long hours downstairs trying to hammer that out with our district leadership and our board. I think it will guide our school system into the future and it gives us a good place to move forward with our strategic plan. So, our goal with this, this is the inside cover of our tri-fold. On the outside cover, we'll have our central office and our information as far as contact information. And then, on the back page, we have all of our schools and our principals listed and their contact information. And then, we'll have in the middle as well, our Board of Education and, you know, input from them as well. So, appreciate the opportunity to work on this and if anybody has any questions or comments, we'll try to answer those.
I knew when we started, I'm a very expert guy that's in leadership with Dr. Redster, that if we could put that, which basically amounts to why we exist, say if we could put it on one piece of paper, one sheet of paper, it could be read in one minute, that would be an accomplishment. I think, I think we achieved it. But that's, I think it's a powerful statement and great work on the graphics.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very attractive, presented a very attractive one. So, we just need the board's approval for our new mission, vision, values, and beliefs.
Do I have a motion to approve the mission, vision, and belief statement that we have just seen?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion is carried to approve our new mission, visions, and belief statements.
Well, thank you very much. And again, I appreciate your work and appreciate Dr. Redster and his work in giving Duane a press release so that we can get that information out along with the graphics. And hopefully, everything goes as planned. This graphic will be on our website in the morning and we'll have everything updated and ready to go. And this will guide our work as we begin revising our strategic plan. Again, appreciate the board's work on that and help and guidance and that.
I have one question. Will we use these during recruitment processes? Will we use them in our chamber? Okay, so it'll be in various places.
Yes, our goal is, when Dina and I, you know, kind of discussed how we wanted to make this, was, you know, obviously very professionally done, which I think she has done that. We want to get those mass-produced, get them out to the businesses and things of that type in our community. We also want to, our teacher center can help us out with poster sizes of this. One will be made for every school, to go in every school. One will be hanging in our central office as the first thing when you come in the door, right behind our receptionist, so that everybody sees it as we go in. So, and then, correct, as we go out and recruit and go to job fairs and things of that type, then this brochure will be used as a recruitment tool.
Since this is the newest that we're doing, are you going to try to send it out with the kids whenever they enroll?
We're going to try, yes. If we can get it, you know, mass-produced and out there that quick, that's what we're going to try to do. And like I said, we want to try to get it on our website as soon as possible and hopefully Duane gets that message out, you know, it's got our website link on there and kind of guide people toward that.
So, this will be the new face?
This is the new face. This is the new face, yeah.
Probably, I'm assuming, I haven't looked at the Chamber of Commerce site in a little while, maybe should have, but I'm assuming there'll be a hyperlink to this and also the Industrial Development Board.
As soon as we, you know, can get all that information there, we'll get it on the chamber and get it to the BRAC and Mr. Herzog and I'm sure he'll help get that message out. But again, this is a great step, you know, it's a great step forward. We revised that four years ago and it was time to look at it again and, you know, appreciate again your leadership in doing that, making that come together.
I just want to echo what Zekman said. Dr. Redster, you came, I guess sorted out what we all had to put together and made it so much better and it's beautiful.
It is, it really is.
Well, it's straight to the point, it's not too wordy.
Right.
It makes it just more, it's just there, it's professional.
Right, very well done.
And I hope, Dr. Redster, you'll convey our thanks to the Belmont administration. And I know you've had some foundation and grant support for your newly created program at Belmont and we appreciate, we'd like for them to know that.
Good, thank you.
And Bobby might want to write a letter to the Belmont president.
Sure. I'm waiting with the president first.
Okay, well, I'll try, I'll try to get that cranked out before then.
May I say?
Sure, sure.
I would just like to congratulate you, the board and the director and the central staff for being very collaborative and very thoughtful and pulling these words together was not easy. And I was not the winner, I was just, because of your ideas and your thoughts and I think something for you to honor and carry forward and to create a real focus for your history going forward. So, I just, I came tonight particularly to congratulate you on the great work. So, good, good piece of, good piece of information.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you're here.
And Dr. Redster made the drive from Nashville down just for our board meeting and going home tonight and then coming back in the morning to work with us again. So, we'll be with our central office staff in the morning and working with our change leadership group, our central office staff, the RPD there, so glad to have him again. Next item on our agenda is our budget update. As you know, the, our budget, we passed our budget in early May and sent it to the county commission. The commission accepted our budget through committee. As, as you know, their consolidated budget goes all into one budget. It did not pass. It was asking for a 10 cent tax increase across the board for, mostly I think for the jail and the reserve, that they had to take money out of the reserve, you know, for the jail expansion project. So, I think that there's a budget and finance meeting tonight. I've been in contact with the committee chairs. All indications are that our budget is fine, that we weren't asking for anything other than a maintenance of effort budget. So, tax rate was set at the same rate it was last year. I think it's a dollar and 96 cents, I believe.
1.99.
1.994, okay. So, we'll get the same amount that we will, we've had. We also had a little bit of increase in our sales tax from our estimate, I think it's about $35,000 above our estimate. So, all indications that that money will stay, you know, with us by law, so we should be okay there. But hopefully, the budget will be passed on in the August meeting and we're operating now on a continuation budget, which doesn't hamper any of our operation as we start school. So, if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions that I know about, about the budget. All right, we'll turn it over to Autumn for our update on our 90% reading goal.
Well, it is July, there's not a whole lot going on, but really, there are some things going on. As you all have heard, we've got lots of summer reading programs going on in the schools, free books being given away. You might have seen the article in the paper a couple of days ago about the summer reading at Magnus Library, which that we provided them with some free books as well. I do have some numbers from our Myon program that I'm excited to share that I just got today, just through Myon. This is not any of the additional summer reading programs that are going on in the schools on a weekly basis, but just through Myon, our students have read over 4,800 books so far this summer, just since May. And that equates to 945 hours of reading just within this program. We have 46 students within this program who have increased their Lexile scores by at least 20 points. Two of those have had an increase of 200 or better points. So, that's just amazing in the course of two months. Some additional information, we've had 38 students who have read at least 20 books, one student having read 108 books. So, really, really good information from our Myon program, which again, is free for us this summer. And just looking at that 4,800 books read, I can't imagine how that's not going to benefit our kids when they come back from school, so that's very encouraging. Also, everyone has two books there that will be for you to take home. One is the 90% reading goal. Those were provided at, to all attendees at the Read Conference, which was held last week in White County. That's a conference that the Children's Reading Foundation, the Upper Cumberland, puts on. It's always very good. This has only been our second year in putting that together. And then, also a book that is kind of a companion book, a little bit of a different focus, is that Annual Growth, Catch Up Growth. If you've heard us talking about the Little Green Book, that's the infamous Little Green Book. So, I'll let, I'll welcome her up in the floor to Mr. Zekman if he'd like to share anything. I think he had received the Blue Book at the conference last week and read it and requested to see if we could get copies of the Blue Book for everyone. And then, just through our contact at the Cookeville office, we were also able to get the Green Book there for you. So, if you'd like to say anything, I'd welcome you to do that.
Well, we'd like to say that I think all of us on this board understand on an intellectual level the importance of reading at grade level and we've all centered to that. We've adopted the 90% third grade on grade level reading goal. Our county commission at our request has also adopted it. But being at the Upper Cumberland Reading Conference, and I guess I was there for maybe four hours, I sort of had a bit of a revelation, you know. I guess I had been guilty of thinking that we had some impediments to reaching these goals that we just couldn't as a school district overcome. Number one is poverty, you know, and the correlation, the statistical correlation between high poverty rates and low reading performance, that's well-known, well-documented. What this book details and what the Blue Book talks about is really centered around is the Kennewick School District in Washington State, about 20,000 students, about three times the size of Warren County's district. And when they started their program in the early 1990s, they were faced with much of the same problems that we have here. And I think it's easy to lapse into sort of a sense of hopelessness. You know, we say and we congratulate ourselves that we are doing the best we can. You know, we're running in this race and we've got a backpack on that's got 20 pounds of rocks in it. And that, that load of rocks gets heavier every year. Well, what they did in Kennewick is basically to demonstrate and show to the whole world that no, you may face these obstacles and you may face these impediments, but you don't have to settle for them. And with some strong intentional work, and I mean very strong intentional, looking at this every day, you know, pulling the carrots up and every, every morning to see how much they've grown, just about, you can turn the corner. And they've had some spectacular results in Kennewick. So, when you read that Blue Book, that is, that's a message of hope. And I think it's not just hope, but it's, it's a challenge. It says, you all can do this. And it's, it's not all that complicated. We just have to be aligned with those goals, we have to be very intentional about the goals, and make a commitment. Now, one of the things that we have going for us in the Warren County school system, we've got Autumn and some other administrators, Bobby, our principals, our teachers, our interventionists, and for the most part, they're, they're already signed on to this program. But I think they need this board's very strong explicit moral support and encouragement. And that may involve board members going out and actually visiting in schools and saying, hey, I'm here and I'm interested, I want to know what's going on. We're here not as a, we're not here as monitors, we're here as observers, we're here to tell you, we want to help. And I think that's, that's probably job number one for the board. Job number one prime is engaging the community. And as you read the Blue Book, and I'm sure the, the Green Book will tell you much the same thing, and then there's the Yellow Book, you know, and it's, it's addressed to parents.
There's a red one too.
And the red book, we haven't got to that yet, okay. But, and they will tell you, these, these writers, Lynn Fielding probably the principal investigator in all this, they will tell you unless you've got the parents involved in early childhood reading and continual support, and it will tell you with this message of the 20 minutes a day reading, you know, the scientific documentation, the logical argument for doing that, it's all detailed in the Blue Book. Just read it. We've got to get the community involved. I, I think that we would not achieve the results that Kennewick has unless you have community involvement. So, I guess my message is, and what I'm urging the board to do as we start the new, the new organizational year, is that we truly do make this job number one, not just paying lip service to them. But we truly, you know, if there's any one thing that board members, in my opinion, need to be doing, is this reading at grade level. Third grade, the predictors of, that you can get from third grade reading scores are absolutely phenomenal. And one of the things that you see when you look at this is those that are below grade level in third grade, they will have some growth over the years, so will those that are in the, in the 50 percentile, so will those in the 90, 90 percent range. And they all grow, but those in the bottom range don't catch up with those in the top range. It is extremely expensive, it is, it is extremely difficult to do that kind of rescue. So, we have what we call interventionists who come in, in the earliest grades and help our students, because if they're not on grade level when they got out of third grade, I'm not saying it's hopeless, but what the data show is that they have a one in eight chance of catching up, one out of eight. So, that's why I think it's so important and I think that's why we need to recommit ourselves and make that recommitment very public. So, I'm hoping at our, at our next, near or the September meeting, we can have something to say about that. So, thank you. I took too much time, Madam Chairperson. But obviously, I feel, I feel strongly about it. That event with the Upper Cumberland Reading Foundation moved me from kind of mental assent to sort of passionate involvement, okay? That's where I am today.
Well, then, I appreciate Mr. Zekman coming. We had the opportunity to just allow one board member to come and Mr. Zekman was the chair of the curriculum committee and asked him if he would be able to make some time and he graciously did, so appreciate you being willing to come and be there.
Appreciate the invitation.
On our personnel report, I'll try to answer any questions if you have any about, you know, personnel. We're hiring folks, refilling our retirement positions and positions in the system. We have our first new teacher in service on Friday, so we have about 29 right now, I think, new teachers that have come in and are coming back to the system from leave, things of that type. So, we'll have them on the, on Friday and get the ball rolling with them.
Do we have any positions open, a lot open right now?
I think there are some that are still vacant, that principals are still working on, but they're just refilled positions where folks have either left or moved to another school and refilling those. So, I think maybe we have one or two that are still open. Hopefully, it won't run all the way up to the time school starts, but sometimes it seems like it does, so. But everything else seems to be, you know, going well. And one last item, Madam Chairman, again, I'd like to welcome Dr. Redster here with us this evening. Also, I'd like to welcome Mr. Jones with us. Mr. Jones will be joining the board in September as Mr. Holmes has decided not to run again and Mr. Jones is running out of post, so he will be representing that area. And he's here tonight, in his words, to kind of be a fly on the wall, but I appreciate him being willing to be, be here and get up to speed and we'll be happy to have him join the board in September, so. But that's, that's all for operations, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Any other committees?
I think we have curriculum.
We'll have curriculum. Okay, if you'll scroll down to start on page 26, if you would please. Okay, go down to page 26. I'm getting there. Okay, on first reading, and Ms. Phillips, if you'll help me with this, on first reading we have J C A D D D, prohibition against hazing. The second was J G E E, student suicide prevention, and I K C B, religion in the classroom. Those on first reading, if we could just comment on those briefly, Rob, and then tell us what's, what's new and what's different and what we, the most significant parts of those. Let's look first at J G C A A A. No, wait a minute, this is the...
D D D.
Well, actually, that first one, D D D, is a brand-new policy.
What we have done is we've always had hazing and we are required by law to have hazing addressed by policy, and we've had that in our bullying and harassment policy. But in a lot of recent events and that have been in the news and there's been sort of some reaction to that in the press, let's say, and just as a risk factor, we wanted to go ahead and have a separate policy on hazing. And this just basically gives the definition of hazing. It does, our purpose is to not have hazing in our schools and does give the general reporting procedures and some accountability for sponsors, coaches, and that sort of thing that is spelled out a little bit more than it is in our bullying policy. So, you know, it does state that hazing is criminal action as well as a, against board policy.
Okay. J C A D is related to the D D D, the prohibition against hazing, that's what I'm showing here. You might go over that definition because the bullying, intimidation, hazing, this can be off-campus if it has the effect of creating a hostile learning environment or interferes with the educational process.
Yes. Now, you're saying the definition of hazing? I know you're saying the definition of hazing.
Right, and while bullying, isn't it pretty much the same?
Both of them could be. The difference between hazing and bullying is hazing oftentimes can be something that the person will submit to. Maybe involuntarily, but they...
Initiation.
Initiation type situation, any physical brutality such as sweeping, bending, striking, branding, shocking, or placing harmful substance on the body, as well as any type of activity like sleep deprivation, exposure to weather, confinement, restricted area, calisthenics, or other activities that subject the student to an unreasonable risk of harm or adversely affects the mental or physical health of this, or safety of the student. So any type of those activities, whether or not the student resists that, would be considered hazing. And it would be against policy as well as against the law. And could be subject the student to, or a, a person to criminal action as well. And of course, we don't have, we do have reporting procedures and the school district can take action and also report it out. Also, there would be no retaliation should someone report hazing or be involved in an investigation.
It does allow for anonymous reporting.
Yes.
And you, I think you mentioned the, the prohibition against retaliation for someone.
Yes.
And then, of course, there also, there's also a section that deals with false reporting. Constitutes libel or slander.
Right, well, that's also, that's in our bullying policy as well, yes. The reporting is, you know, basically the same for that. And hazing is covered under the bullying and harassment policy. But this just spells out the hazing a little bit more because, again, that is also criminal action and also because it does affect, you know, we usually have employees in our school that would deal with reporting besides students of bullying that would be in our obligation to report under that. But this would also go to sponsors who are volunteers for the school and coaches as well. I mean, not that they would not be covered, but this more specifically sets that out for them. And we will be using this in training our chaperones and our coaches as well to give them more of an idea of what we're talking about and that this isn't a real issue in schools that we want to make sure is not just addressed briefly, but is addressed specifically by a separate policy.
So we don't just touch on it at the beginning of the year and then forget about it, right?
No, we've already addressed it with our principals, coaches, et cetera, so.
And this one is not required by law. We, what we have already is what was required by law, but we just decided to do this as a, sort of to make sure that it was covered fully so that we would not be in a position later of saying, oh, we wish we would have done that as folks in other counties and across the nation have found out.
Right, so we're profiting from the, from the misery of others, right?
We hope that, yes, we're...
Hopefully being proactive.
Being proactive, yes.
Let's take a look at J G E E, the student suicide prevention.
Okay, this is a policy that was given to us as a model that's been worked on by the Board of Ed as well as T S B A. And this is required by the new law and it has to be enacted this school year or at the beginning of this school year. And it just, it's going to place some more emphasis on procedures and training for prevention, intervention, and postvention for suicide. It does give some information here on, you know, where students can go, one eight hundred number, as well as some more procedures for what the responsibility is. This is an area where a lot of times teachers and other adults in the building don't exactly know what they're supposed to do. This sets this out what the responsibility is in those three areas of prevention, intervention, and postvention. We are also going to have a protocol that I'm working on next week with our counselors that will then also, we've also talked to the principals about that. So we'll have a more specific protocol on that so that in the event of a crisis, people know almost like a checklist exactly what they're supposed to do and who is responsible for what.
If, if I remember, and I'm hoping I'm not getting these confused, but there is some discretion in notification of parents or guardians.
Yes, because of the fact that there might be a time or a situation in which it was not best or in the, in the, the adults that is responding to the, to the student crisis. In their opinion, that they think that it might not be in the best interest of the student that the parent find out, right? Then, then we would need to refer that out to D C S and/or the Sheriff's Department.
And, and of course, we'll also have some responsibility for bringing in professional counselors, psychologists if necessary.
Yes, we will use our school counselors and our school psychologists as a first line of defense. But then we would also, you know, in certain situations, we, well, we would bring in crisis management personnel and, which would be psychologists in some cases or psycho, other mental health professionals.
So there's going to be a proper procedure at every school level? That will be reported to a person designated by the principal?
Yes. Yeah, we'll have, and more than likely Candace Wilmor will probably be our central office digs at me because she is a school psychologist and has that training in suicide prevention background. So we're working on the steps and then it'll, if there's an issue at a school, then it'll go, you know, directly to her and then that protocol will be followed in every school. If we have a student that threatens that.
And it'll be similar to the crisis management that we did as an overall for lots of different types of crises that we, that we discussed suicide as one of those, but this will be more specific to that and should be very, first of all, we're going to have two hours of training for every, every employee in the district on suicide prevention, intervention, or postvention. But then they will also have something that they are very familiar with and should be able to use. It's very user friendly in case they are the person that has a situation come up while they're with the student.
Now, the parents will be notified of all this and students will know?
It specifies here what the, you know, basically what, what the things that the notification will entail to the parent and the documentation for that in every case. And then, as Mr. Zackman stated, you know, in the case, which would be the exception, that the parent was deemed not to be notified at that time, they would go ahead and call.
But I mean, I'm talking about the parents that know that this is available and this is what we're doing.
We'll have this on our website as soon as we get to second reading and it will be posted. And we're also going to have, actually, I think we may already have a suicide prevention number listed on the front page of our website, but we will also highlight this, I'm sure, and, and put it where folks will know what our procedure is.
Well, I think one of the things in our training, and I'm sure this is, you know, module one in the training program, is recognition of warning signs. Some students will verbalize it, others, there will be physical signs of self-harm, self-mutilation mainly, and, and maybe some other, other signs. So we're going to be fully up to date on recognizing.
Yes, our training that we're doing now will not only include, you know, looking at this policy, but also there's a two-hour, it's a video segmented training that's from the Jason Flatt Law. And it's by that foundation has given this, the information on this. And it is in segments, so, you know, some of it talks about prevention, some of it talks about signs and symptoms. It also brings in bullying or child abuse, some other things that will also be a part of that as well and as they relate to suicide and suicide prevention. And those will be done before school starts, so it should be done.
Every staff member has to go through that training.
And there's a...
Not just teachers, every staff member.
Right, well, I'm doing cafeteria workers next Monday. They're going to go through that. And we've got different folks scheduled at different times. Central office staff is also, is also scheduled, as well as we'll have Durham will do it and Kelly Services will also do it. And there is a little test at the end so that you make sure you hit the highlights. I mean, it's not a difficult test, but it just makes sure that you've learned the main points about it.
Well, all right, let's look at that other one on first reading, I K C B, religion in the curriculum.
Okay, this is another policy that is mandated change in policy by the new law that went into effect this last legislative session. And again, this one was sent to us as a model, which was what the legislature suggested happen. We did take out our, our old policy, we just struck through that policy completely and, and have proposed adopting the policy as sent to us as a model. And, you know, basically this does re, as the highlight, I think everybody's has highlighted, the inclusion of religion shall be for educational purposes only and emphasis on religious themes should only be as extensive as necessary for a balanced and comprehensive study of the curriculum and particularly against proselytizing, establishing, fostering, or demeaning any particular religion, religious tenets, or beliefs. And that's the main part of that.
Well, all right. Now, here again, what Robin's talking about is line twenty-five. It's mercifully short policy, but very much to the point. That line twenty-five probably highlighted on your copies, such studies shall never be used to proselytize, establish, foster, or demean any particular religion, religion tenets, religious tenets or beliefs and that, or demean any particular religion.
And again, at twenty-seven, student initiated expression, which reflect their belief or non-belief shall be accommodated.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's the rest of that.
All right, well, let's, let me scroll back up here and make sure I have these policy descriptors just right. So I'm going to move for adoption en masse on first reading of J C A D D D, J G E E, and I K C B. That's my motion.
Okay, we've had a motion to adopt J C A D D D, J G E E, I K C B on the first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion is carried to accept this policy on the first reading, J C A D D D, J G E E, and I K C B.
Okay, thank you, Madam, Madam Chairperson. On second reading, we've already visited these, J G C A A A, prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions, J C A D, prohibition against discrimination, harassment, bullying, intimidation, and hazing of students, and C R, the cardiopulmonary resuscitation. And that's basically a training and awareness issue. So we've, we've already looked at those, so I'm going to move for adoption on second reading of those three policy actions.
Okay, we've had a motion to adopt the second readings of J G C A A A, J C A D, and C R. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion is carried to accept the second reading of J G C A A A, J C A D, and C R.
Madam Chairperson, let me ask Mr. Cox, I thought I saw something in the Tennessean when we're talking about the sports-related concussions. Wasn't there an article, one of our school districts has just bought some reporting, wirelessly reporting helmets for the football team?
I don't know, I have not heard of that.
Well, am I just imagining that? You know, like this, like the four hundred dollars. Pardon?
Okay, no, I didn't say that.
Like four hundred dollars a, a copy, is that right? And I guess they report wirelessly to, you know, maybe the trainer has some kind of readout there at the bench or something?
Oh, we can look at that, that's a high-dollar helmet.
No, that's a high-dollar helmet, but, and by the way, that policy, the prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions, the coach or the trainer has a duty, an affirmative duty to pull that person out.
Oh, sure.
Out, out, out of action if, if any signs, and they can't, they can't return to play or practice until they have...
All right, they have to go through that.
Medical professionals release.
Yeah, there has to be, there's a concussion protocol they have to go through and all of our coaches are trained on that concussion protocol, or trainers obviously are. So they have to go through that. If they get a head injury or they get, show signs of a concussion, yes, they have to come out of the game. Cannot go back into the game or participate until they pass that concussion protocol. And if they are found to have a concussion, then they have to have a doctor's release and pass the concussion protocol before they're allowed to even practice again, so.
It does have a penalty for coaches or trainers that do not follow that.
Every coach, including our elementary coaches, have to go through that.
Very good. That completes the business for the policies under curriculum and achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from the Facilities and Resources Committee. Okay. First, I'm going to report on the renovations that have been going, taking place. Bobby Ray Gymnasium addition and renovation, the gym floor is installed and is about fifty percent complete. The gym floor finish will take place immediately following the wood installation. The HVAC is functional. From the Urban College addition renovation, the exterior building is complete. The sod's in place and being watered. The new sewer system is being tested. They're about eight days away from the punch list. This time, I always want to thank Upland Design for, for their help and their support and all that they have done, being with us when we needed them. Okay, out of the Facilities and Resources Committee meeting, a motion was made, seconded, and carried to proceed with bids for the Urban College Road and the complete alternates as needed. Do I have a motion on the Urban College Road to proceed with bids and complete alternates as needed?
Motion to proceed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and the motion carries that we get bids to proceed with the Urban College Road and complete alternates as needed. Any other committees have anything to report? Any other business?
Madam Chairman, before you leave, if you'll see Dana, we've been looking at, you know, some shirts that the board can have, and she's gotten some samples that she'd like to show you and get your opinion on. So if you'll take a, stop by on your way out and give her your feedback on that, we'll try to move forward with that. But I think that's it, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It is moved in second that the meeting adjourned. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it and this meeting is adjourned.